Time having arrived, the following meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Brockton Housing Authority. It's Thor Park, where we are in the Mayor Bill Cawthorne's Executive Boardroom. At Manning Tower, forty-five Park Road, Prince Thor Park and Mall, House three oh one. A notice has been posted at City Hall and also on our website. This is a public hearing with a hearing of visitors included in the agenda. And all invited, and all are invited to attend in person or on Zoom. I will make a roll call for forums. Tim Sullivan, here. Janet Trapp.
Here.
Cal Roberts.
Here.
Some members are here present and also some are on Zoom. Please note that all Brockton Housing Authority meetings are recorded. You are hereby given notice that members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to be in a regular session on Thursday, June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four at two P M. In the Mayor Bill Cawthorne Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, forty-five Park Road, Prince Thor Park and Mall. I will read off the Governor's COVID nineteen audit. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and state of emergency, on March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. For so want to be ordered, public parties are temporarily barred from the open meeting law requirements at meeting fee held in public places, open, and physically accessible to the public. The longest measures are taken to ensure public access to the party deliberations were adequate, either alternative means. That order was extended to April third, twenty twenty-one, extended again for July third, twenty twenty-two, extended again from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, extended again to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three by Governor Baker, and extended again on March thirty-first, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, by Governor Heer. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance, you know, participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technical or logistical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item or initiative could make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance reporting. The public is invited to view and or listen to this meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud app in any app store or at www.zoom.us at two P M on June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. Click on Join a Meeting and enter meeting ID number eight one zero seven four one one five one one seven, passcode eight five zero one one three, or use the link http://zoom.us/i/8107415117. You may also join by calling the public side at one six four six five five eight eight six five six at two P M on June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and enter meeting ID eight one zero seven four one one five one one seven, passcode eight five zero one one three, followed by a pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants of the appropriate time and manner of public comment during this meeting. Could you all please rise if you can and remove your hats and silence your cell phones on place of leaving? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the truly positive, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, roll call.
Commissioner Trapp.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Mister Chairman.
Here, you have a call. Item two. Approval of amendment to the regular meeting of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, item A in the package.
Well, there are a couple of items of correspondence. One is simply a poster that's internal. Oh, sorry. Come here. I was working on. Um, I have had the opportunity to review the minutes. I've found them to be in order, and I would recommend that they be approved as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, uh, Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as written. Any discussion or questions on the motion? As you know, we need a roll call on every motion, because some of us are on Zoom.
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Uh, Mister Chairman.
Here. Motion carries. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak in full disclosure. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with name, address, and contact numbers from the start of the meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any interest under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to fifteen minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing your three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Is there any hearing of visitors?
I do not. Is there anybody who would like to be heard?
Hearing none. We have no hearing of visitors. Item four.
Very good. It's probably starting on that sooner than later. Um, the first is a recruiting poster that we have, and I wanted the board to know of some of the events that are coming up um, with the vibrancy committee. The first is that we will be doing an ice cream um, social on July seventh. So this is the internal poster we asking for volunteers uh, from the staff, and I believe you've been doing very well on the volunteers and the staff uh, to hand out ice creams for kids. It's sort of an end of that school year celebration. And then the second is being run by um, the Dawn Davy Center. Uh, they're having a senior prom day down at the Camp Valley Building where the senior center is. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan asked me if he should wear a tux. I said, you'd probably get away with it too. Uh, but it is. It's something, uh, in fact, I saw some pictures in the paper uh, or online recently of a uh, a senior prom that went on. So it's we, what we'd like to do is see after, especially after the COVID, more and more people get out, socialize out of their apartments. It's healthier for them. There's many, many things going on. This is just a couple I'd like to.
Just one thing. You said July.
July eleventh.
Exactly. I have links around my.
Oh, yeah, July eleventh.
There's other people at home. No waxing required on that.
No.
Item five. Approval of the bill of a regular meeting of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, that we see in the package.
Yes, thank you. I have reviewed the bills um, with Tom and Tanya, and I found everything in order. We have a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to approve the bill for the regular meeting of June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four as presented. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Oh, Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item six, apartment of home ownership leasing agent, exhibit D in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Paul to speak on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Members of the board. Um, this is Danielle Collins. Our recommendation for an appointment as a homeownership leasing officer um, in May, we posted internally, a post on our website and published on it, filled a vacancy sponsored by through E. We had a number of resumes. After reviewed by Ms. Barney, who was on the screen, who would not make it today because the auditors went down and said, we want to look at some more files. So she's been attending to the auditors. Um, and the Christopher, the office manager, we decided to do eight candidates. I those that we picked, Ms. Collins was by far the most qualified candidate. You can see from her resume, she has worked in the affordable housing industry for some time, doing the type of work that um, the people in the section eight department, recertifying people, making sure that they income qualified for um, our programs. And that's one of the major tasks. Um, she gave me references, I spoke with one who happens to also be on our SMAT board, Mick Ford, uh, Gene Kaya, Aaron Block, and of course Danielle works for downtown Trinity. And they were talking.
I also had the opportunity to speak with uh, Ms. Collins. She is a very capable person. I feel listen Brockton. Very nice and has a lot of experience doing this. Do well with Chris and her team.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to appoint Danielle Hollis for Brockton to position a homeownership leasing agent effective July one, twenty twenty-four, at a step one rate of forty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars per unit. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Here. Motion carries. Let me read this off too, as you're walking. I'm gonna read it off. I used to do it by memory. I had a printed on. Let me thank you for wanting to work here for a Brockton Housing Authority, one of the best jobs in the world, in my opinion. We own two thousand one hundred apartments in Brooklyn, administer over twenty-five hundred rental assistance to be devoted. This is not an easy job. We, the board of commissioners, and the executive team put our residents first. They are our number one priority. Without them, they don't need me, this board, buildings, staff, or units. Please be remit to treat our residents with respect. We also say that anyone can have a bad day, feel a little shot or argumentative, for no apparent reason. If this should happen to you, please smile and walk away. Don't argue. We can all try to do it to be a better person. If you can do that, you will go far in the table. It is how you're very glad to meet you and welcome you to the team. The board meets once a month in this room on many different subjects. Please feel free to attend. It's one of these kind of in feeling. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, if I could take um, roll call and talk over to the Personnel Department to get their paperwork. Thank you.
You always have.
I always have.
Congratulations.
Good.
Thank you.
Item seven. Approval of amendment to the Brockton Housing Authority Section Eight Administrative Plan, exhibit D in the package.
I'd like Mr. Campbell to speak on this.
Good afternoon. Um, we are bringing this amendment to the section eight, adding things because of the oversight, we missed the language when it came to Massachusetts Fair Holding. Initially, there was a lot of the class we measured. Yes, I would like the board commissioners to amend section eight, add in plan chapter two, prepare it out to dash A. I think only those sections I gave you guys to. And paragraph two, two dash one.
So what it does, it's a P H A policy. This is where you have discretion. Brockton Housing Authority recognizes the additional technical classes contained in Mass. General Law one fifty-one B and eight oh force uh, CMR two. This, these are state regulations. This is a federal A law, but Massachusetts, we have to add the state as well.
We need a motion in a second. The motion is to amend the Brockton Housing Authority Section Eight Administrative Plan, Chapter Two, Paragraph two dash one A and Paragraph two dash one B as presented. We need a motion and a.
So moved.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to amend the Brockton Housing Authority Section Eight Administrative Plan, Chapter Two, Paragraph two dash one A and Paragraph two dash one B as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Yep.
Item eight. Approval of priority specification toilet replacement Bel Air Heights project twenty-four dash two, exhibit D in the package.
If I could ask, uh, Mister Barrett to speak on it?
Good afternoon, you know, the board. For a number of years, capital improvements have been requisitioned for the toilet, uh, to a leading authority with um, proprietary specifications. Um, capital improvements is again requested proprietary specifications under both American Standard and Pro Pro Bright Height Round and elongated toilet, the plus mission project. As proprietary, as property managers, this determination is based on the authority's efforts to maintain continuity for the developers, additionally, our maintenance facilities will be uniformed, this static stock is possibly a worry. The importance was to match general law one forty-nine specifications for a strict competition. Computers and three manufacturer products may only be used for sound reasons, sound reasons in public interest in our considered proprietor. It already leaves the public's best interest to make your standard bed pro, right height, round and elongated toilet, the proprietary specifications. That being said, state law requires Brockton Housing Authority Board to approve for the method prior to its advertising. We would recommend a motion for approval, proprietary specs, American Standard bed pro height, bright height, um, for the toilet replacement project at twenty-four dash two, Bel Air Heights.
So it's going to be the wrong ones, Chris?
There'll be round ones, so most elongated, fully, um, Andy Chap.
But the primary um, um, purpose of this, we want all one toilet. We don't want to have a development with fourteen different types of toilets. So the maintenance unit shows up, it doesn't have the right pods. It just elongates the care and the cost of the.
Because I know with the elongated, they had a problem with the door.
Correct.
So they, so that will be round ones.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, Andy Chap, any, uh, complete different design.
Yeah.
So we're not.
Yeah, they are. They're bigger.
One question.
Yes. It's one point two eight, yeah. Um, right now, I think we have, I think we're running one point six two. Uh, we're having a lot of problems with them. And they're unusual. It was called stealth. It was a new uh, pointed at the time. And it basically has a trough that tips on going down the process. For Washington, they're showing, and they're also have the. Yep.
I had read people like that.
And it was, well, you, now you really would.
Yeah. So I think they're a long way uh, on the low flow toilets. They really have to, I mean, the design that Chris told, it sounds like a design that tried and failed. Uh, but they are able to flush a lot more uh, material with less, less water than, than even, you know, ten years ago, five years ago.
We need a motion in a second. Item eight.
Want to take it here? So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to approve a priority specification of American Standard bed pro, bright height, round, and elongated front for toilet replacement project at Bel Air Heights project twenty-four dash two. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item nine. Water contract. Opera targeted award, fire line replacement, state development, exhibit F in the package.
Like that, Mister Barrett, to speak on this, please. On February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, capital improvement in conjunction with the Designer's election committee at the Executive Office of Housing and Living Services, soliciting responses to the D C, D S C requests for designer services, for engineering services for cap of number oh four four oh nine nine, opera target award, fire line replacement project. Project construction budget estimated at one point eight eight, one hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. With a um, core base basic services, ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. This project includes the replacement of all fire line systems for the following state development. Two hundred dash two, Roosevelt High, six six seven, sorry, what's her license? Six six seven one A Rainbow Terrace, six six seven dash two Kennedy Drive, six six seven dash four, Charles McGodle, six six seven dash five and Woodhouse, six six seven dash nine one, Svetimont, and seven oh five two A, uh, Golden Terrace. Then again, on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, D S C received five submissions. Then on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, capital improvements amended attended D C S, the zoom meeting to discuss the evaluation and rank the firm, uh, the company D C S submitted their free rank as one Delta White Critical Solutions LLC, John Berkey Jr.'s Electric Construction and Engineering Company, and Rogue Engineering Design. Who was made the motion to be reported with request of motion to award Delta White Brittle Critical Solutions LLC of eight sixty-seven, Wilton Street, uh, Boston, Mass., contract for engineering services with cap of four four oh nine nine, opera target award, fire line replacements in the amount of ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Well, I'd like to add two things. That's one is a offer. So this is additional money that we're getting in our capital program for the state. And it goes, it's targeted. That's what they say you can give a fire line. We need upgraded fire line. Like, it's, it's very important. The difference in, in the selection of the engineer here, the state gets involved. That's what that D S C is, the design selection committee. Chris sits in on it. Uh, he's one vote out of how many? Five?
Yeah, I mean, five.
Yeah, so if the, the housing authority has sort of watered down in the selection, they send up these three. Chris checks them out, says, okay, Dan, I, are they all right with me? Any clouds, Delta, um, uh, by critical solutions. I, it's very acceptable, but it's different than you've seen in a long time, most, like the engineer and not. No, it's an old way.
It's only coming back.
It's an old way coming back because the amount of money is the way they're doing it.
The amount of money.
Uh, the, um, similar to the ones we have, the brides and for the families.
It, there's a real mix of different lines with these developments. So it's all, it will be on the same idea. But each development is a little bit. We will keep the same, like, we will keep the, I mean, it's likely coming back to proprietary specs for the alarm system. Make sure that we put them all there, keep the same, we have several. These are really bad.
We need a motion and a second. Item nine.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is for water contract in the amount of ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for Delta White Critical Solutions LLC of Boston, Mass. For engineering services on opera targeted award, fire line replacement for Brockton Housing Authority State Development. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Trapp.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item ten. Review of financial comparatives, exhibit G in the package.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Page to speak on this item. Uh, Mr. Page, this might be a little bit uh, beat up to have auditors doing three audits this week, running around.
He all. Yeah.
Well, those were just the files they were checking for public housing. They've been down at his office going through every one of his files.
Yeah, this stuff has been quite a challenge. The financial statements that were put in with your board packets, uh, come the first four months of our fiscal year, April thirtieth. Um, programs are doing um, pretty much expected, uh, is how we expected, uh, of course, with the exception of the state. Uh, but other than that, you have any questions that we would be happy to answer.
And just overall, we're performing as we would. Uh, there are a couple of items on income that we need to adjust that will reflect uh, in the next couple of months as we go, go through.
Still take the central profit. What you do?
Yeah. Yeah, that's because um, that's because we don't, we haven't drawn down the straight money capital fund, so it's all to remember.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's actually a surplus. I just finished up May yesterday. Show me the surplus.
Remember state deficits that due to.
Uh, the state is mostly due to um, vacancy uh, costs.
So we, there are two things that we will do that. One is we will request money specifically for reimbursement on vacancies. They do have a vacancy, vacancy fund on that, and then we will also ask for supplemental um, what do they call when they go here?
Augmentation.
Augmentation, thank you. An augmentation for our reserves. It's, it's clearly known by the Executive Office of Housing that the amount of money that we're getting will not support the turnover of units for um, for their urban housing, sorry, costs, it's been filled with dirt, that's Red Bull River. Uh, and they, they on a regular basis will uh, sit down and do a calculation to. This official.
One question. Emergency housing. Yes, three thousand dollars.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Those are, Chris Lane could answer that, but those are uh, you like that?
Your review, Chris.
They are, um, a special voucher that came out three years ago um, by the Biden administration. They are, um, a special voucher that came out three years ago, um, by the Biden administration, emergency housing voucher. For people who are homeless. And these vouchers, after, um. September can no longer be renewed. So if somebody's in it, it can be renewed, but once somebody goes out of the program, we have thirty one of them, we'll go down to thirty, we'll go down to twenty nine.
Alright.
Ninety eight. So, um, these are very special type of voucher. What was your specific question? What on the, that, that's what happened. We're, we're a section A voucher, but they're a very specific type. Very limited type.
And the, uh, the people who go in there come through, uh, the bill.
Yes, you know, we had to, um, uh, as part of the grant in getting them, we had to, uh. Execute an M O U with the, um. It's part of bills, but it's a continuum of care, with the continuum of care. You approved that M O U three years ago. Uh, but e- everybody is screened by either father bills or, you know, um. Domestic violence shelters.
Yeah. Yep.
Would you say the program, program has been successful, Tom?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, we were one of the, the most successful housing authorities when it first came up. Because of Brunner and the position she had that we had created landlord participant facilitator and working with father bills.
She's smiling, but.
We leased people up right away. And we were at like ninety five percent, a hundred percent within like the first three months. Um, six months, a year later, other housing authorities throughout the country had only reached up ten percent of their offers. So it wa- it's been very successful here. Be, because of the, the team we put together.
It's been great with some of the homeless.
Yeah.
Who got the homes that they know one person to have.
And they help.
They are so happy they have a roof over their head.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need a motion and a second, item ten.
So moved. No. Second.
Okay.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Crass. Motion is to accept the financial comparative to the period ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and put on file. Any discussions or questions on the motion? Here we go. Local people.
Commissioner Crass.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried. Item eleven. Review of annual meeting details, exhibit H in your package.
So this is a review of the annual meeting bills, um, and I, I'd like to go through it line by line. Uh, Commissioner Harris has not been able to make it, so we're going to have to bring her up to speed tomorrow at the meeting. Uh, you can see, and she, you will all have this in front of you. Uh, Commissioner Crass, you have this in front of you now today?
Yeah, yes.
So, uh, the, it starts with the, um, it, the meeting will start promptly at noon. I would ask that you get there before that. I mean, eleven thirty would not be too early if you get there before that even, because it gives you a time to speak to many people in the room. Uh, with many of the residents, many of our colleagues, uh, the people we work with. We will start with a moment of silence for Linda Dowler. Uh, so. Happen, we have a picture that will be up. Uh, I will say a couple of words about her, then ask for a moment of silence.
What intention?
But that'll be the very first thing we do. I will say something to the effect that we were shocked to hear the loss of our colleague last Saturday with the Dowler worked for the housing authority for thirty seven years. Expected by our residents and our colleagues and then ask for a moment of silence. Something about that. Uh, we will then go, uh, to the pledge allegiance. I have had it confirmed by two people that the flag is there. A common American flag. Um. We, uh, then have a, a young man, I think, uh, Commissioner Trapp knows him, Stephen, Stephen Nasa Yamanto. Uh, he was the lead in, uh, the wedding scene.
Yeah, he's very good. He's saying, um, for the scholarships given out by the end of L A C P two.
Yeah.
So he, he, we're, we're looking forward to that. I always see it as one of the highlights, so he will come up, he'll sing. Um, I will then introduce the board. Um.
He was the star of the whole play.
Think he was what?
The star of both plays, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wedding singer in yellow. Uncle Yoko.
What was the other one?
Uncle Cal.
Uh, okay.
Uncle Calvin.
Well, I can tell you, he's a handsome young man with a lot of talent.
Yes.
Uh, so we're, we're.
And very personable.
And yes, and he's, uh, from what Brunner told me, he's going to stay, uh, for the meal, so he, he will.
Good, good.
He has two, uh, two guests coming with him, so that, that, that makes me feel good. Um, I'll introduce the, um, the board. We will be also recognizing the elected officials and any other special, uh, if, uh, a board member is a special guest that we have. Um. That's the introduction, then, uh, I will turn it over to you, uh, Tim. You'll call the meeting to order. I'll call the roll call. You then ask for Mayor Sullivan to come up and speak. Uh, I have not heard that call. He's been communicating with you, Mr. Chairman, so. Oh, good. And make them double profits, okay? Then, uh, we will have the service awards. Uh, Chairman Sullivan will introduce the employees. There's only free service of, uh, awards. Uh. Then, uh, Commissioner Trias, you'll present the award. We'll do the same thing. The person will come up, will get their picture, uh, taken. Um. The chairman will then ask me to, uh. Present the annual report. So what I will do is review the annual report, summarize some of the stories in the annual report, what they mean for the housing, uh, what they mean for the.
The one thing you found. Case or what?
No, no, we will keep the, we will keep them to the, uh, if you're looking at the, the podium to the right where we did it last year. So in fact, Janet will have a chair there for you like we did last year. Uh.
Okay.
Uh. I will present the annual report. The way the annual report will go, uh, as I said, I'll speak above some of the stories, what they mean for the housing authority. Then we have a three minute video.
Oh, good.
And the video will go off, that the room will get dark, the video will go off, it'll come back on. I'll say about a minute more, then I'll turn it back to you, Chairman. Uh. Commissioner Roberts, this is where we, Commissioner Roberts makes the motion to accept the Brockton Housing Authority two thousand twenty three annual report. And Commissioner Harris seconds the motion. So, um. We, we will, uh, have to do that. What's that? Taylor, Taylor will be there. I did speak for about it. Three and three on the table. I told him two and three, three and three, so if we could let, so I don't have to chase down Michael. Okay. Uh. Uh, and then the election of the officers, uh, Chairman Sullivan will introduce Commissioner Roberts, and again, you'll have this right in front of you.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Roberts, you'll make the motion to elect the following state of offices. You read them on. Chairman Timothy Sullivan, Vice Chairman Ernest Benefit, Treasurer Cal Roberts, Assistant Treasurer Taylor Harris, and Member Janet Crass. Next, Commissioner Harris will second the motion, so. How?
No, we don't need it. But he will not be.
Uh.
But he be moved.
That's, they want to. Uh. So, uh, Commissioner Harris will second the motion. I'll ask, so I, I believe it'll be on one side of the podium. Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Trask, Commissioner Harris. So if Commissioner, uh, Roberts, Trask can just make sure we, uh, let Commissioner Harris know to make the second at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Uh. Then we go to adjournment. Commissioner Roberts will make the motion to adjourn. Commissioner Harris seconds that motion. We'll have lunch. During lunch, there'll be light music. There'll be some pictures that go on behind us, that, that go on. Uh. Then we do the person of the year, that is Pat Kellinger. Uh. And we'll do the presentation, take some pictures, and we will end the singing God Bless America. Uh, God bless, the, the words will be up on the, on the wall so we can sing it. And then, uh, Chairman Sullivan, you can decide whether you wanna let them go, but send them back to work. Yeah, send them back, I gotta go to work, you know. Yeah, we, we are, Chris and Tom and I are going across the street. We have a meeting over at Camp Hello. With the, uh, Fire Department of all the plans for the, so we have a two o'clock meeting.
Yeah.
Uh. So it, it should be a very nice, uh, day. I was at the room this morning. It looked beautiful. We have the big banner in the back. Uh, as I said, when you come in, you'll be pictures, just, you know, capturing what's, um, some of the pictures from last year. There'll be the board, um, the board of commissioners boards, those will be there. There'll be a book, a couple of boards about, um, Pat Kellinger, uh, there. And, uh, any pictures that you want taken, please, uh, let myself or Claude know, Brunner know, we'll, we'll, uh, sort of stay it. So if you wanna get a picture taken with anybody in particular, uh, we will, uh, Carol, uh, want before the end of day to get all the rap together. Uh, that, that's important. Uh, all the residents, to be invited more than just the residents, as we do. What we asked the, uh, managers to do was identify other people who work in the building who do special things. It, it could be they just, uh, live on the, you know, they go and they knock on doors, make sure everybody's all right. Uh, and so we do have what I'll call just good neighbors.
Yep.
Residents with good neighbors.
What about the vibrancy committee? Do they meet reg- they meet regularly?
They do. You're gonna see them in the video.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So should they get a picture?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And we have some pictures of that.
Oh, good.
Uh. Uh, and again, there, there's a lot happening with them, so if, but what, so we're always looking for, they'll always take candids. You know, we have a beautiful picture, uh, Commissioner Trapp, of you and Commissioner Roberts from last year. You both have, uh, a great smile on your face and.
Oh, good. We're not grumpy like usual, Carol.
Yeah.
Uh. So again, I just, we do have a photographer there. They're looking for anything like that, you know, if you want, if you wanna get a picture with the mayor, and we will get a picture with the mayor and the board members there. Uh.
He's gonna be there.
Yep, that very well. So. But anybody else.
And what's for lunch?
We're having, uh, chicken.
Surprise.
And I, we spoke to Michael. Michael is, who was the gentleman, Charles.
Charles.
Charles has left, Michael is there. Michael is a very impressive, uh, man, uh, who will be, uh, carrying the meals. Uh, we saw Michael and Matthew. Matthew will be doing the technical stuff, making sure that the lights go up, that the microphones work, if the video goes off when it's supposed to. Uh, so again.
Excuse me?
Deserved. What are they?
Strawberry shortcake.
Joe, strawberry shortcake.
Perfect.
Oh.
Whoa. Never lose with it.
The, uh, but it's a, just remember, it's a fast pace. It's an hour and a half, but we're squeezing in a lot in that hour and a half. Uh. So we could, in other words, they're gonna drop, you, when you get there, the salads are gonna be on your, uh, table. They can't serve you lunch until they take the, uh, salad away, so we're.
Each veggies.
They're planning on taking the salads away, uh, they're putting the lunches down by twelve forty. So it'll be taken back before that, so we might be speaking, they've been instructed to make it as quiet as possible, but there will be some activity. And Susan and I have experienced during this years and years, there, there's no other way to, to tell the people, we're only gonna have them there for an hour and a half, and do it any other way.
Just the mayor, the mayor.
We, we have a meeting at two o'clock. Uh, uh, which the, the chief of, uh, the fire chief will be there. He, I believe, will be at the meeting. Uh, Eddie Williams will be at the, uh, meeting too, so he'll be at the, uh, the annual. February, I was, I think it's a hundred ninety one days today. I was at a meeting with him yesterday. He, he has retired.
Janet, Cal.
Yeah.
Any problem with me running as chair again?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any problem with me running as chair?
No.
Okay, Cal already said no. Just checking. Yeah, we're out.
So that, that's, it's again, if you look over it, uh, but it's, you know, we'll, we'll be, um, moving the day right along. There's no changes from the past, other than the, uh. Uh, moment of silence, but like that.
No action on that at all?
Nope.
Any questions on item eleven? We can get there early and on tomorrow. One. Item twelve, executive director's report. It's never high in your package.
So you're gonna hear me say this a little bit tomorrow in an overview, but, um. HUD and the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development have been changing regulations at a, a, a rapid pace. And, and the most frustrating part about it is they change them, they tell you they're going to implement them on this date. You have to get trained. Chris, uh, Barney and her staff went to the days long training for, um, this, this stuff, and then they cancel. We're, we're gonna put it off right here. And just think about learning a new language, but not going to use it for a couple of years, so it's a waste of time. And we put a lot of in, uh, into it, so it's, uh, one thing that you should know about, uh, this tech thing, that the, we have to train people on new software. They're getting it up and ready, and then they say, they say, it's absolutely be done on August first. Now they're saying, we don't know. Uh. The, uh. I'll just mention one other thing. We are, we had a meeting yesterday with Walden Stock Pot. Walden Stock Pot. Walden Stock Pot is a kitchen out of Walden. That was started by this gentleman, a former MIT, um, uh, professor. And what they do is they, um, start with small business people, they look for kitchens, they, um. Prepare meals, and then they send the meals out to the community. We had talked to them about doing that at Camp Hello. We would have a commercial kitchen. It would be run out of Camp Hello. They would send meals out to the community. They're, by the way, they're partnered with Signature, um, Fresh Fly, uh, by Bill Marley, um, what's Marley's last name?
Comedy.
Comedy, thank. Thank you. So they've partnered with Marley. We met with her yesterday also.
Good, good.
They're already doing meals at the charter school. They're doing meals, um, with, um, at the Y after school programs. And the benefit to this would be, you would have a chef, making home cooked meals on site. And they would go to our residents. Now, our residents are probably only going to do forty, eighty meals. They can't make enough money on that, that's what. So it's subsidized to our, our residents, and then the meals go out to the community. Uh, Marley was doing, during COVID, seven thousand meals a day.
Wow.
Uh. So, but the most thing they need is a kitchen, so that's, it's, it's a great concept. Uh, I can't tell you, we, we're excited about getting it done. It'd be wonderful for our, uh, residents. Uh, and it would be, so we have a lot of Haitian residents. Marley's Haitian, she could do a Haitian, uh, uh, menu. She could, she could do an American menu. She can do a Givernian menu. She can say to the residents there, what do you like? You know, do you, do you like these spices again? Do you not like these spices? And it's good. What's that?
Year round.
Year round.
Oh.
Year round. No, it would be a, a full time venture. So we're excited about that. And then just on the camp fellow, we are, um, set up to go to planning? Yeah, planning. Uh, we're having a meeting with the, a pre-meeting with the Fire Department tomorrow. Hopefully someone from, uh, D P W will be there. Uh, because we wanna know about any of their concerns before we get into the official meeting. Uh, but things are moving along there. And we continue to pound on the door of, uh, Housing and Community Development.
Yeah.
Housing. And what are they, he's taking off the housing liberal communities? Uh.
Well.
Yeah.
You got it.
Uh. Uh, so, um. There, and Malad Broguer just asked for the student chat if, if you could come for a meeting tomorrow. You certainly can come for a meeting. It would be wonderful.
You know, Mar, Marlene and, and, um, Haitian community partners, they also, I believe, are running two shelters. Um, in, in motels for primarily Haitian, um, immigrants too, that are, that are in this area. So, I mean, she's a busy lady.
She is very busy, and, and then she did, uh, we actually, we're doing another grant with the E P A. And, uh, we need collaborators, so I spoke to her about that, uh, in that group, and she did tell me about the work. And, uh, we need collaborators, so I spoke to her about that, uh, in that group, and she did tell me about the work they were doing with the shelters.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, very busy, very busy. She, she's running her kitchen out, she's running the, uh, uh. The restaurant out of the kitchen down on Main Street, down, uh, right across from the donut shop, and she's also running a kitchen out of the Y. Uh, you know, the old Y.
Oh, she is.
Oh, yeah. Uh, to get meals, yeah, get meals out to the after-school program and to the charter schools, so. What's happening? She's, she's doing that. And then other than that, uh, Kennedy Drive is just about done. Is it done?
It looks good.
Very close. It, it is, it's the wait one, um, for T E to give us like the next point for our show.
All right, well, we should open up that, uh, and get the, uh. Uh, the laundry open, uh, for the people. And then the vibrancy committee, though, I added, added at the, um, very end. Um, as you can see, they did the, uh, press and court resource fair, the Aqua, Aqua Paquin Resource Fair. Washington Heights Earth Day Event, flower planting. Um, they're doing the back, they, they wanna do back-to-school events, antique, these ideas, movie nights, antique car shows. Animal encounter, they've been looking into Halloween events, Hal, uh. Holiday season events. They're looking to see if they can get, uh, you know, Santa Claus to ride around a fire truck and go to a different development. Uh. So if you can see, they're really, they're really getting ideas together, uh, to make our development vibrant.
And who, how do they get money for this?
So we, we have, um. Small parts of money that can be used for different things like this. Uh. The, uh, um, we, we have money that is from the old antenna at the, uh. That lay a high-rise when it went from federal to state that could be used to fund, uh, a program, uh, for the, uh, the residents. So there's a little part of money. I mean, none of these are very expensive. Movie nights, you, you rent a projector. We're thinking about buying one of those blow-up screens. Maybe even buying the projector, so it might be an initial investment of, uh, eight hundred dollars, maybe, and then you can go to every single one of your sites and use it.
You know, DW Field Park Association bought their own, um, equipment to do movie nights at Fields Park, maybe. You know, you could rent it from them or something.
Sure. So I know they did that there, and they, again, they had, uh.
Janet, I heard they only have one movie though.
Oh, no, they, they're doing them more, like, the last one, it was a rainout. The, they started it, I think, the last day of school or, or something, but it, it. But they're, I think they're doing them every two weeks during the summer.
Just like. When I was doing, we had to buy the rights to show the movie.
Yeah, well, they still have to do that, I believe, but they at least have the equipment, the big screen and the projector, I believe.
Okay.
Might be doing outside.
Right, and that's it. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or discussion, item one? Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Pratt, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion to accept the executive director's report for June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four and put on file. Any discussion or other questions?
They're still there, yes. They're working on, uh, some drainage issues on their other building up in Avon, you know, as you go through, the roads go like this. Uh, but they, they, it looks like they're basically. We, we are not rushing them out either. So when it all comes down to them moving, we will have to negotiate how much we need to pay them to move, and we will say, oh, you've had the use of free, so it'll be a. Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried. Item thirteen, all business. Any all business? There are none. Item fourteen, no business. Any new business? There are none. Item fifteen, the chairman, he gave a motion in a second. Slowly, yes, Kennedy.
Okay.
We need a motion and a second, item fifteen.
So moved, second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion into adjournment. You all call them, people?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Meeting.
Thank you very much.
We'll meet you tomorrow.